We'll now call the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 to order, and it looks like we all have Flower Festival fever. So, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Is Pastor McIntosh here? All right, I don't see him, so let's rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I gave a presentation this past weekend at Juneteenth to the NAACP and C4 in Old Town, but today we have a proclamation in honor of solid waste and recycling, and I see our solid waste manager here, so meet me at the podium. All right. We are celebrating National Solid Waste and Recycling Worker Appreciation Week, whereas the nation and city of Lompoc celebrates the week of June 17th as National Solid Waste and Recycling Worker Appreciation Week, and whereas Solid Waste and Recycling Worker Appreciation Week reminds the public to thank all those in the solid waste and recycling industry for their dedication and hard work, and whereas according to the Center of For Disease Control, the eradication of many diseases in the western world is due in larger part to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal, and whereas the men and women employed by the city's refuse collection, recycling, green waste, organics, street sweeping, code enforcement, graffiti abatement, and landfill programs in the community make significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of Lompoc citizens, and whereas the proper collection and disposal of waste in the city's landfill processing of recyclables is vital to preventing disease, litter, and illegal dumping in city alleyways and other areas of the city, and whereas the city's refuse collection, recycling, green waste, organics, street sweeping, code enforcement, graffiti abatement, and landfill programs contribute to a sanitary and clean community, whereas the city values and celebrates hundreds of refuse and recycling collectors, street sweepers, code enforcement, graffiti abatement, and landfill, and all others employed in the sanitation industry to serve residents and local businesses. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th, 2024, as National Solid Waste and Recycling Worker Appreciation Week, and encourage all citizens and local businesses to participate in opportunities to thank the men and women in the sanitation industry. And I just want to be the first to do so because, again, without a solid waste department and all the things mentioned here, we deal with wind as it is anyway, and so we battle trying to keep our community clean, and so without such a great sanitation department, it would be far worse off than we already deal with, and I so appreciate all of you and the work you do, so thank you.
Thank you. On council and mayor, thank you, Keith Quinlan, solid waste manager. On behalf of the men and women of the solid waste division, I want to first thank the council and the mayor for the proclamation recognizing the division. Secondly, I want to thank each member of the city's solid waste division, the landfill staff, the collection staff, and all the support staff that provide efficient, effective, and without fanfare service to the residents and businesses here in the city. Thank you again, and I just want to put out a reminder, tomorrow is the Juneteenth holiday. City offices will be closed, solid waste collection will be delayed by one day for the remainder of the week, and the landfill will also be closed tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Albro, floor is yours for the city manager report.
Thank you. Wanted to give everybody a quick update on Pioneer Park. Got some pictures here. We got the all-inclusive playground equipment installed along with some exercise equipment, and Christie, I think there's a video too. Yeah, it's super exciting to see that. We'll be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony attentively scheduled for July 2nd at 11:00 PM there at Pioneer Park, and we'll be sending out invitations for that. I'd also like to remind everybody that we have the 71st Flower Festival and Parade. This year, the parade's theme will be Shooting for the Stars. It will be on Saturday, the 22nd at 10:00 AM, and the Flower Festival will be the 20th through the 23rd. Great. Also wanted to update everybody on the spring yard beautification contest winners. For the businesses, we have Coast Hills Credit Union, and then we also have 1113 North A. I think that's the Bella House. Those are our first-place winners. We're also starting a new program called SAVE, the Lompoc Fire Department in conjunction with the California Fire Foundation. It supplies aid to victims during emergency. It allows them to get a $250 gift card that they can use for housing, food, and clothing. So I think it's a very good program in people that are, you know, have fire damage. Then I think Keith talked about our closures for the City Hall, the Lompoc Library, and the landfill, and like he said, if your trash is going to be picked up on Wednesday, it'll be picked up on Thursday now, and then Thursday will be picked up on Friday, and that's all I have for today.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that. All right, we will now move on to consent calendar. These are items 1 through 10. If you would like to speak on this item, you have three minutes, and you may come to the podium. You also may call in at 805-875-8201. Again, items 1 through 10 are consent calendar. Consent calendar is considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Again, if you would like to speak on items 1 through 10, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, city council members and Madam Mayor, for allowing us to speak today. I want to, my name is Pedro Rodriguez, and I reside in Santa Maria, California, and I am the owner and president of RDZ Contractors. I'd like to speak on item number nine, which is the rescinding award of RCH Construction for River Park. I'd like to say that due, there were five bids, and apparently two, one was really low, and RCH was next, who was found unresponsive. So I see that the recommendation here was to reject all bids, but you still have two responsible bidders that turned in proposals, so I would like to recommend that the bid go to the next responsible bidder, who would be RDZ. So I'd like to read the award of basis in the RFP. The city will award this contract based on the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the bidder who fully complies with all bid requirements and whose past performance, reputation, and financial capabilities is deemed accessible, or acceptable, sorry, and who has offered the most advantageous pricing or cost benefit based on the criteria stipulated in this bid package. So I find that RDZ did submit a responsible bid. The last two bidders, our bid price difference is only 3%, so these two bids are probably what it's going to cost to complete this project. The other, the first low bidder was almost $300,000 lower than us, and then obviously RCH didn't turn in a complete bid package. So I'm here today to recommend that this be awarded to RDZ, and if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Is there an item that anyone would like to pull or that anyone has any questions on? Councilmember Ball.
Just had a super quick question, and again, my memory might have failed me, which is quite possible. On item number 10, is, was the $25,000 for the murals, was that included in the original $100,000 that the council had talked about?
Yes, that was part of the $100,000.
Okay.
It was the first $25,000 that was designated and sold to be transferred to the Mural Society, and the remaining $75,000 was to be discussed at a future time. The green light is on, okay.
You have to get really close evidently.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for the reminder, appreciate that. No other questions.
And would somebody on staff be willing to answer on item nine while we are rejecting all bids and going back to rebid?
I'll answer from the city attorney's perspective, and then finance might want to elaborate, but it is correct that the council has a choice. You could award to the next lowest bidder, which would be RDZ, or what staff is recommending is another option the council has as a legal option, which is to reject all bids and rebid the project, and staff is recommending that we're changing the scope of work, and so that would be the reason for why we're recommending to reject all bids, change the scope of work, and rebid the project. And I'll let Ms. Donnelly elaborate if she would like.
Yeah, the bottom line on this one is that we, we looked at it and realized that we were close enough to the next year's budget that we could combine the project and bid out or expand the scope of work to include both phases of the project, and we wanted to be able to get, take advantage of the economies of scale to be able to hopefully bring that, the bid into our, within our budget.
So that's why you're recommending going back out to a rebid, because you're expanding the scope and hopes of getting better budget accommodations?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, just so you better understand. All right, is there an item anybody would like to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept items 1 through 10. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept consent.
Second, and Councilmember Cordova seconded that. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, now is your opportunity for oral communication on city matters that are not on the agenda, so if you have something you'd like to speak to, but it is not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the microphone for three minutes, or you may call in at
Hello, Carl Jones. My concern is the properties around town that have these eight-foot weeds, and they're owned by people that are businesses out of our area, and I know for a fact what they're doing is basically waiting until the third and final letter to be, you know, sent to them saying, "Clean it up or we're going to do it," before they take any action, because if they wait, they only have to cut that place once, instead of keeping it well trimmed the whole time. We have, you know, they're on Laurel, I have eight-foot weeds, like you wouldn't believe, and I know that one partial that has got them is owned by somebody that does not live in Lompoc, and I know it takes the code enforcement quite a lot of effort to get contact with these people, and by the time these people actually take some action, you know, you watch the people on either side, they've had mowed it two or three times from the letters from the city. So yeah, they're making a smart business move by waiting until that last letter, but I think we need to take people that are in that realm and find some way of adding to, you know, the law or, you know, the ordinance, to saying, "If you're habitual, guess what? You're going to get one letter, maybe two, and then that's it." But if I can show history that you're doing this every year, when I've ended up with, you know, eight-foot weeds, I have homeless people building encampments inside the weeds, we have trash dumped in there because nobody can see it from the roads, it's really ridiculous. I mean, and I know why they're doing it, and if I was a business, I'd do the same thing, you know, but, because it's business sense, but we need to look at, you know, the fact that we do have these things around the city, and I probably, if it's happening on my street, it's probably happening elsewhere, and I'm literally, these things are usually eight to 10 foot tall, and they will not do anything until probably that last letter, when they say, "Well, we got to do it now, we're going to pay through our teeth to the city." So I'm just saying, we might want to look at that if possible, if it's people that we know are doing this and prolonging it, maybe we should find some way to write into the ordinance so that we can come after these people that we know are stretching it out every year. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Item number 11, 12, and 13 are all public hearings. The first item is adoption of resolution number 6654, parentheses 24, adopting the 2024 bail schedule. And we have Lieutenant Chisholm to make the presentation. And he's learned the shortcut. He's been here long enough to know.
Good evening. The, as, our bail schedule hasn't been updated since 2017. Our, this was prompted by the fact that we didn't have a bail schedule for the fine for the RV parking, so when we started this process, we went and looked and we started going through all of them. It's rather difficult trying to get all these, it was rather difficult trying to get all these other cities to share their information with us, but we finally got a list and put it together, and that's what was presented to you. For the dollar amounts for the fines that were the previous fines, and the second column has the list of the proposed dollar amounts.
All right, any questions for Lieutenant Chisholm? Councilmember Ball.
I'm just curious, how do we decide how much it goes up?
Basically, it was CPI for the, for 2017 on. Majority of these had relatively, I mean, not relatively, they're very low, low fine amounts, and when you compare with the amounts that the court, court can charge, a lot of extra fines that we, that we, the city, can't charge, but even the base fines for handicap parking and unregistered vehicle, those have increased from 2017 to now quite a bit.
Are we relatively in line with other cities or still under?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, we will potentially call you back after public comment, but thank you for that. All right, we will now open the floor for public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to this, you may come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Item number 11, public comment. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for either additional questions or a motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I motion that we accept and adopt resolution number 6665, parentheses 24, for the new 2024 bail schedule.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Councilmember Vega seconded, let's vote. And that passed 5-0. All right, public hearing item number two is to consider the ordering of services and improvements, the continuation of the assessments for fiscal year 2425 for the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District number 20201, adoption of resolution number 6674, parentheses 24, approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering the continuation of the assessments for fiscal year 2425. And we have our accounting and revenue manager, Mr. Adams, to present.
Good evening. I'll keep this quick and simple, we do this every year, so this is the public hearing for the Park and Pool Assessment District. This is to add the updated amounts for the CFEs to the county tax roll. So the quick timeline that we've had for this year, back in February, on February 20th, SEI Consulting Group was directed to complete the engineer's report. On May 21st, the engineer's report was preliminarily approved by city council, and it was adopted by resolution, and then we gave notice for today's public hearing, which is where we're at today. In January, the CPI from last year's January to this January was 2.53%. We cannot add more, exceed 3% when we add this to the park and pool assessment, so the adjusted amount was 3% because we have to use up the previous year's uncaptured, which was at 6.81%. That will be applied to the future years, so this year's 3% takes our SFE to $32.54 per house, which is the increase of 3%. And that will bring in an estimated value of $381,975 to the park and pool to offset their, or to help supplement their projects. So the total budget for next year for parks and pool was $10,375,104. The city's required minimum 25% is $2,593,776, with the contributions that we've gotten from HUD and the budgetary, or the budget, we have $7.3 million contributed through the park, or through the city, with the remainder coming from the park and pool. So tonight, we are, I'm asking the council adopt resolution 667424, approving the engineer's report, confirming the diagram, and proceeding with the assessment to send it to the city council, or city, I'm sorry, the county to add to the tax roll.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, this is something standard we do. I know you want to ask, Councilmember Starbuck, but, but you're not going to, are you? All right. If you would like to speak to this item, we'll open public comment on item number 12. If you would like, you can come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, and you will have three minutes either way. All right, seeing no one call in and no one come to the podium to make a comment, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for either additional questions or a motion to accept the staff recommendation. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion to accept 6674.
And accepting staff's recommendation. All right. Councilmember Cordova.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And final public hearing item number 13, approval of fiscal year 202425 draft annual action plan and budget for the Community Development Grant and Human Services Program and adoption of resolution number 6675, parentheses 24, and we have Ms. Oveiller to present this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council, staff, and members of our community. I am here tonight for this public hearing. I'm seeking council's approval for the CDBG and the human service program budgets, and I'm requesting authorization to submit them with the fiscal year 202425 action plan to HUD. The primary objective of the CDBG program is to develop communities for low and moderately low-income persons by providing decent, safe, and suitable living environments. Important funding criteria to note is, CDBG funds may not replace any city or state-funded functions. Human service donations are restricted for human service activities and may not be used for administrative costs. Funding must benefit low-income persons, and expenditures not in compliance with HUD must be paid back with the city's general fund. The program budget is comprised of a HUD/CDBG entitlement grant, CDBG program income, and human service donations. For fiscal year 202425, the City of Lompoc is entitled to receive $539,646 from HUD. Of that total per HUD, there is a 20% maximum that can be used for administrative costs and a 15% maximum for human services. The balance will be put toward the capital projects. Program income for 2425 grant year also has the 20% maximum that can be used for program administration, and staff is recommending that the balance be used toward capital projects. The human service donations resulting from utility billing customer donations and a $25,000 allocation that was approved by our council is restricted for human services. It also cannot be used for city administration for the program. As stated before, up to 20% of the CDBG funds may be used for program and administration. Staff is recommending that council allocate the $128,577 of the budget toward the year's program administration that will cover salaries, UAL, supplies for the program administration, which includes the management of activities servicing of loans, monitoring of affordable housing, and the fair housing program. Staff is recommending council-approved capital funds in the amount of $383,367 to continue the progress on improvements to our parks. $50,000 to Catholic charities to continue the Housing and Mobile Home Emergency Repair Grant Program to assist in stabilizing existing housing, and the $134,946 toward human services as listed there on the screen. This is recommended by staff and our Human Service Commission. Tonight, we are here holding a public hearing to approve the 2425 Annual Action Plan for Submission to HUD. The plan was posted for public review in English and Spanish at the Lompoc Library, Anderson Reg Center, and on the city's website, and in the Lompoc Record for a 30-day public comment period ending tonight. After council receives public comment, staff recommends council approves the budget and recommendation as provided. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, real quick, you said that human services did agree with the recommendations in this report, they did meet, and all the people that applied went through the proper channels on this?
That is correct. There was a little bit extra money that we received from HUD that we were not expecting, so some of the agencies that applied and qualified to receive funding, instead of giving the recommendation that we received from our human services, let's say they asked for $25,000 and they received $23.50. for $25,000 and they received $2350, we went ahead and upped it by that $2,000 or $1,500 to give them what they asked because we had enough to do that.
I guess my curiosity was more if we have a human services commission still.
We still have a human service commission. Thank you for repeating, if that was your question. Yes, we do still have a commission, and one of our commissioners is here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck, I mean, Ball.
That's okay. Yeah.
Councilmember Ball.
Something before beauty, they say.
Yeah, yeah, something before beauty.
I'm just curious about just how it works. So those, the $380,000 goes towards ADA improvements in parks. Obviously, somebody's keeping track of that, and it's, do we have a way to understand how much something is and where we're making advances in that area?
Of course we do. We're tracking it all. Things go to bid, we have contracts, and we track those invoices as they come in.
Perfect. I'd love to learn more about that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional questions, we will go to public comments. Standby in case any questions come up. If you would like to speak on item number 13, you are welcome to come to the podium. You will have three minutes. If you would like to call in, you may call 805-875-8201, and this is for item number 13. Seeing no one else rise and ask any questions or call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for a motion. Four more questions. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept Resolution 6675-24.
All right. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. Item number 14, unfinished business. Adoption of Resolution Number 667624, approving a utility box art program as recommended by the Beautification and Appearance Commission. Establish the Beautification and Appearance Commission as the arts-selecting body for the utility box art program. And we have Mr. Sean O'Neil from our urban forestry to present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Back in July of '22, the Lompoc Streetscape Multimodal Plan was approved by city council and the planning commission. Part of that plan encouraged utility box art. In the joint meeting of February this year with the city council and Beautification and Appearance Commission, we brought forward a draft plan and received direction from city council. Part of that request was to shorten and simplify the program. So we did so and brought it back to the commission for review and support. They support the draft plan in the state that it's in now, form. And so we're here to ask for consideration and adoption of the utility box art program as it was submitted.
Councilmember Vega.
Hey, Sean, this is a relatively simple program, right? It's not going to expend too much on staff time and stuff. I noticed here that it's, there's no fiscal impact because they're self-funded for that part of it, okay? So just wondering about that. They're basically going to run their own little ship there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Cool. Thanks.
Councilmember Ball.
And just for clarity, maybe you could elaborate a little bit, so people won't expect, you know, an artist at each box with a bunch of paints? We're going the vinyl overlay approach?
Vinyl wrap, correct.
Vinyl wrap. Maybe you can explain why that's important and...
We determined it'd be easier to maintain if there is any type of damage done to it or graffiti put on it, rather than trying to either locate the artist that was original to that painting or trying to find somebody else to come back and paint it. It'd be easier to either rewrap it or take that section off and put a new section on it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I just want to throw out that I'm really glad to see it shortened in regular English instead of governmentese. It's going to be a lot easier for the commission and people that are involved in it, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right. Are there any other questions for staff? All right. Standby. We will go to public comment on this one. If you would like to speak to this item, it's item number 14. The number to call is 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium, and you will have three minutes to speak.
I was wondering if the city could lease the Jeopardy music for times like this. Pops up.
I don't know that Jeopardy's the right choice. All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item, and I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega.
Okay. Looks like I made again, so I'll recommend that we accept the Resolution 6676-24, approving the utility box art program.
Councilmember Ball.
Give it a wholehearted second.
All right. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Be sure and read that, and get ready to submit your applications to Cover a Box. It'll be great. Looking forward to it. All right. Item number 15, new business. Status update of electric utility fund balances and extension of timeline to present an electric rate study and the April 23rd, 2023 emergency electric rate increase from the original June 30th, 2024 to no later than September 30th, 2024. And we have Ms. Donnelly to give us the update and request the extension.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public, and city staff. Here to present an update, we've done these about quarterly since the emergency rate increase was implemented, and just want to bring what I expect will be our final update prior to the rate study. And I pulled the one that is out of battery, so I'm going to grab. There we go. So just a quick recap. At the end of '22, we observed a critical downturn in electric fund cash due to increased volatility in power costs, and staff proposed an emergency 30% rate increase, which was approved on April 18th, 2023. Those bills were sent out in June for May usage, and we observed in the books our first increase in cash in July. So those June bills were due in July, so we started seeing an increase in cash. We brought an update to council last time on January 16th. So this is a continuation of the graphs that I've shared each time, and I'm going to hold for one second. Do you have your pointer? The pointer on this doesn't work really well. It's very light, all in the white, so I like to use the fancy one that Mr. Albro has. Thank you. See, isn't that better? I need to get one of these. This is showing here that our revenues and expenses are still staying really close. There's a dip here, and you'll notice the same similar dip in January of the prior year. That is because that's when we do our write-offs for the year, and so the revenues take a dip because of those write-offs. But generally speaking, you can see that the revenues are in line with expenses. This graph is doing so much. It's a lot of pretty colors. What I want to show you right here, though, is back in January '22, when, before the crisis really hit, our effective operating cash was at the cash reserve target of 25%. You can see this purple line was equal with the green line. And our actual unrestricted cash was significantly higher. This is what we want to get back to. This is the goal. This is where we are right now. And you can see on this line, and we're going to look at this section here in just a second, so I'm going to actually move forward to that so we can look at what's happened since the rate increase. This is the part with just the rate increase. You can see that once rates were increased, the cash leveled off and has remained consistent. There was a little bit of an increase this last, in April, but it's pretty steady. This blue dotted line is what we were projecting would happen if we did not have an increase that this, it was going to continue to decrease like this. And instead, it has gone, again, has stabilized. I was curious if we hadn't done the, we had, this blue line is the projection, right? The dotted, that's based on assumptions and projections. Now that we are past and we have the actual data, I was curious, what would have happened if we had received 30% less revenue than we actually did, if we didn't have that 30% increase? And that's that yellow line right here. And you can see that we did better than was projected, but it still would have hit zero here in April. So to me, this has a lot of information to it. Our key takeaways is that revenue still is above our pre-rate increase projections. Complicated way to say, we increased rates, we got more money. Revenues and expenses remain consistently even and are pacing about equal to each other. So we don't, while the hemorrhaging has stopped, we haven't begun to heal. And so we, it isn't losing money, but we haven't regained and made it back up the losses that we had seen before. So that's why, operating cash remains stable, but it's still below zero, and there hasn't been a real recovery to the target reserve level. And that's because our expenses and revenues are naturally close, which would be great if we didn't have to make that back up, but it's not, it isn't quite enough. Our electric rate study has been delayed by approximately three months. I'm going to go into that in just a minute here. We started work with the consultant in August of '22 to conduct the electric utility cost of service study, which would then be followed by the electric utility rate study. We had to pause the cost of service study until the end of 2023 due to staff capacity as well as a regulator-required wastewater cost of service study. So we had to move the wastewater cost of service study to prioritize that because of a regulation that was required, and we just couldn't run two studies at the same time. We did get back to working on the electric cost of service study, and that draft was completed in May of 2024. We are reviewing that draft now. And the rate study itself, which is the step after the cost of service study, is almost complete. We do expect completion, we hope by July. It looks good for July, maybe August, and we will expect to bring it to council shortly thereafter, which is why we are requesting the extension through September. So the electric rate increases was approved on April 18th, and the goal was that the permanent rate increase would be discussed and implemented next month, in July 2024, based upon the cost of the rate study. Prior to the increase, the 30% increase, rates were the same as they had been 12 years prior. And what we're seeing now is, the rate study is expected to be presented for discussion by September 30th of this year. And based on the data that I showed you on the graphs before and what we are seeing in the draft report of the cost of service study, it's indicating that the 30% emergency rate increase is not sufficient to cover the ongoing needs of the electric utility. It is, it, so, and how not sufficient is what we're working on in the next month or two months, and we'll be bringing that back with specific data. But because of that, I would recommend, staff recommends, that we continue the emergency rate increase because it is doing what it was intended to do. It is stopping the hemorrhaging until we can have a permanent solution. And we will be bringing back a all-encompassing solution that would address rates, and they may not be a flat rate increase. We're looking at the entire rate structure for electric. So, and so we are recommending the continuation of the rate increase until the full rate study is able to be discussed, no later than September 30th, 2024. And that's my presentation.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
You used the term "write-offs" up here.
Oh, yes. Well, with the little dip.
The little dip there was actually accounts receivable, then, that we've written off?
And when we do that, it decreases the revenue.
Right. But those are basically people that have burned us on the bill.
Correct.
How much was that?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can get it to you.
Was it over a million?
No, I don't believe so.
I'm just curious because, you know, we had the opportunity here where we could have applied carbon credits and brought that healthy again, and I just wanted to throw that out there that we didn't, and that would have saved us multiple hundreds of thousands there, and everybody would have been on time and up to date.
When we apply carbon credits, and I can, there's a whole discussion around the pros and cons of applying carbon credits to electric bills, and that's another discussion. But when we apply those, usually it's in the amount of $100, maybe $150, and it's equally to all. And so most of the time when we're writing off bills that, or utility bills that aren't being paid, they're higher dollar values, and they are, they've been occurring over long periods of time.
Right. But it is a partial recovery.
It's a partial recovery.
I mean, the discussion's done and over. We're buying battery chargers with it. But, long story short, it would have helped the utility and the citizens if we'd have done that move, but that's not what we're discussing now.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Ball.
So as we start to wrap our head around the terms like insufficient, there's obviously a lot of volatility in our ability to project the cost. Things outside of our control are constantly moving. Do you mind itemizing a couple of things that are outside of our control that impact this the most? I mean, is it just the megawatt charge, or what's the cost that we can't catch up with even with the increases?
Well, right now, I think that we have, with the 30%, we have seen a stabilization of our revenue and expenditures. What we're looking at moving forward are increased costs related to electrification. We're looking at the cost of power, and there are so many different variables. I would like to be able to defer until we have the full cost of service study. We can have our consultants present a thorough presentation that will go into the detail of all the factors that play into it. There's just having to do with our capital costs and building out infrastructure to be able to support the increased load. And if we wanted to get into more detail tonight, I could ask our utility director to come up and talk more about that. But I do think that the electric rate study presentation will really dive into a lot of those factors.
I think that's fair, and I'm willing to wait a little bit, but it's definitely something I want to wrap my head around, is what are those things that are outside of our control that force us to be, you know, kind of in limbo, trying to figure out where the sweet spot for having the right rate is?
Right. Agreed. And I think that part of it, again, is we used up reserves. And so right now, we are stable, but we have a combination of needing to make up the reserves that we used, as well as looking to the future and the costs that are going to be coming down the line.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comment on item number 15. If you'd like to speak, you may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium, and you will have three minutes to speak either way. We could always get a version of the Lompoc song and play it. And a blast in the big L, exactly. All right, seeing no one call in or rise to speak to this item, I will bring it back to council. As your representative with the Northern California Power Agency, which we're a member of, one of the costs that we're seeing that we don't control is the price for energy. So when we produce excess energy, it's often sold on the market, but right now, there's so much excess solar and wind that it's a negative price. So we are actually losing money because we're having to beg people to buy the additional energy that's being produced. So there is a slight excess and not enough storage for us to sell at another time. The other factor, when you look at all the infrastructure additions we need to do, we're still importing a great deal of the equipment that is needed to add transformers and lines, and expanding our resiliency and building out these grids, that it's expensive because of the imports on it. So those are just a sampling of what you'll see coming back as part of costs we can't control, as well as investments that we, as part of the organization, have made into all of our generation resources. So someplace like the Lowdi Energy Center becoming a hydrogen hub is a way to extend our resource and not just be a debt source for us, but end up being healthier longer and providing a way to utilize that excess solar and wind in order to produce a different form of energy that can be utilized in a different way. So those are just a sample of some of the power costs. And I don't see my utility director telling me no. So I did interpret all of that correctly. Yay. All right. I know this isn't something we want to hear, but because it has stabilized us, it's an important solution as a way to get back to a healthy reserve and being able to still have lower rates than our surrounding PG&E customers outside the city limits. So I will entertain a motion. Granted, nobody, nobody likes to make this motion, so I will make the motion to accept the status update and the extension to no later than September 30th, 2024. And I would like a second. Councilmember Ball?
I'll give you a second.
All right, so we have it moved and seconded. All right, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Now, any written communications, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. If you would like to speak to us, this is your one last chance, and since you've all been such chatty Cathys, I would love to see a lineup. Actually, no. But you're always welcome. This is your final two-minute opportunity to speak to us at the podium, or 805-875-8205, if you'd like to call in.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Is it possible that I could have the chief come up and tell what we can do when we're seeing illegal fireworks?
Absolutely. We will close this in a moment, and then I would love to have them share that information, because I saw that press release, I saw the push through the app, and I was like, yay, because I'm using it all the time. All right, I will close oral communications, because I really want the community to hear this, because I know people are very frustrated with the illegal fireworks that have begun, and so we are doing our best to combat it. And the police department is utilizing their app, and here's the chief to tell us all about it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community. So as many of you know, we have a mobile app through the police department, and we've had that since 2015. And just some basic stats associated with that. Since 2015, the app has been installed 21,801 times. It's been opened, I mean, they literally went to the app, opened it up, 761,875 times. So this has been a really good tool for our police department to engage with, with our community. And every year, we know that the fireworks are going to generate a lot of calls into the dispatch center, and one of the ways that we try to balance that, so they're not overwhelmed in our dispatch center, is to put a tab on the mobile app. So if you don't have our mobile app, you can actually download it from the App Store on your phone. And once you install it, you have the ability to put your personal information in there, and I'd recommend you do that. There's a button you can turn on if you're nervous about being identified and reporting something, and you can hit that button, it'll keep your information off, but you always have it on, on your account, on that app. So what we've done is we've taken one of the graffiti tabs, and we've changed it to fireworks, so that if you're suffering with illegal fireworks in your, in or around your residence, you can actually report it to us through the app. That report will go to the dispatch centers. They will create an incident for that, and as soon as the officers have a time or a chance to get over to check that area, they'll get out and do that. So it's a nice way for us to get the information into the dispatch center without overloading them with telephone calls. So we would appreciate it if the community would engage with that, let us know what's going on in your neighborhoods, and as soon as an officer is free to go check it out, they'll definitely go do that.
And doesn't it sort of help you create a heat map of, you've got a lot of reports coming from a specific location that helps you sort of target an area that might be having excessive use of them?
It does, and these are just really difficult things for us to investigate, because by the time we get into the neighborhood, if you, if we're going to a domestic incident, that takes priority over a fireworks call. So we have to deal with that first, and then they'll go back and they'll do that. And a lot of times, these people are already inside the residence somewhere and keeping an eye out for the police officers.
Exactly. But you can begin to see, if we report often enough, you can begin to see and maybe patrol that area a little more aggressively and maybe catch it in the act. I know my neighborhood has some culprits who like to go down into the canal bed and set them off, and they sound three times as loud when they're trapped in, inside that. And, and so I was thrilled to see that that was back, because it is a very easy way in the moment to, because it pinpoints, it will grab your location. And, and you, as he said, you can turn it off and make it anonymous, or you can leave it associated with, with who you are, so that it helps also target the area. There's also a phone number. I want the public to be aware that if you don't have a smartphone and don't want to download the app, if you're just calling from a landline, or don't have a smartphone, you can call 805-736-2341, which is the non-emergency line, and report it as well.
That is correct.
To keep traffic down from the emergency line, correct? Awesome. Councilmember Starbuck.
You can still report graffiti, though.
Yes, you can still.
Yes, there is a tab for that as well. Works the same way. It's very helpful. We, we really appreciate that still being there as well. But I think it's a, it's a really useful tool in the moment, and again, I find it very easy to use. So thank you for coming up and sharing that.
We'll keep it live through the Fourth of July and afterwards, because we know that usually the last week of July, we're still seeing some. So it'll be active, and people will still be able to report it through there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will bring it back to council for comments and reports. Councilmember Ball.
So just one quick one. I just had such a great time attending the Juneteenth event here in downtown Lompoc on South H this past Saturday. It's just great to see the event grow, to see so much support from city services and staff and the nonprofit sector and all those who participated. That was just a really great communal event. And I also wanted to say thank you, and I want to apologize for not wearing anything floral to celebrate Flower Festival, and kudos to Councilwoman Cordova and the mayor for showing up with some flowers.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports. Have a good festival.
Councilmember Cordova.
No reports.
Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. I also attended the Juneteenth event and sponsored the baking contest one more time, and I just want to say congratulations to the individuals that competed. There was some amazing sweet treats that were presented, and I always enjoy tasting them. I don't judge them, I just sponsor it. I leave it to those with a better palate than mine to say who's the winner, so I just want to congratulate all them. I also attended the Queen's Coronation Dinner on Saturday night. It was a full day this past Saturday, and I want to say congratulations to our Flower Festival Queen Madison Carley, McCarley, and then to the first runner-up and Miss Congeniality, Miss Brynlee Thomas, who happens to be Councilmember Starbuck's granddaughter. And then to the second runner-up, Jaleen Ramirez, who was sponsored by the Lompoc Employee Development Association. She did an amazing job, and I just want to say congratulations. It is the first queen candidate the DEA-sponsored who's ever won a position. And then the other three young ladies that are the princesses, Miss Sadie Tamayo, Ashlyn Woods, and Arian Tuchuk, for competing. It is a nerve-wracking few months for these young ladies. Many outsiders think it's a beauty contest. It really isn't. It is watching young women really learn how to express themselves, fundraise, connect with their community, and really advocate for it, and to see them start to finish and really blossom in this program is really impressive. And I just want to thank the Flower Festival Association and all of the sponsors who sponsor each of the young women through this process. Thank them for their time. It's, it's still an amazing program, and I really support it. I also attended the Lompoc Police Department swearing in for two of our newest officers, Luis Ruiz and Yovani Martinez. I went out to the A's Life Cycle and welcomed over 2,000 riders to our community and taught them how to say Lompoc, and watched them freeze, because in Paso Robles, two days before, they had ended up with, some with heat stroke and dehydration. And then they got to us, and they kept asking, are you sure we're on the Central Coast? And I said, yes, welcome to Mother Nature's air condition, because they were all freezing that night. And then I attended the American Public Power Association National Conference down in San Diego as your member representative for the Northern California Power Agency, as I'm currently the vice chair for that. And it was great, because it was in San Diego, so I didn't have to fly across the country. I also attended the Elected Leaders Forum to address homelessness, to hear an update on what the county is doing. I attended the City Leadership of Santa Barbara County, which is the city managers and mayors' quarterly meeting to get together and talk about what's going on in our communities, what issues we're dealing with, and what we might need to either work with each other to solve or advocate to the state or the federal government above us. And so I represented us. The city manager was out of town. And then, last but not least, I also provided a tour of City Hall to the VTC organization. So you heard about the fireworks tab in the app. We will work hard as we possibly can, given our staffing, to respond to that. For those of you that are illegally using the fireworks, please remember, we are a community that is very small. We are in a valley, sounds bounce. We are in a high fire danger. As you know, with all the fires that are erupting, there is a fire that is south of us that is now across two counties and over 15,000 acres, and at only 8% containment. So please, I would encourage you to use the safe and sane when they go on sale for the one week, and avoid using the illegal, because we are in a high fire danger. And with that, I will say, enjoy the Flower Festival. Ride your bike, use the bus system, reduce parking impacts on the neighborhoods around it, and enjoy this weekend. And we will adjourn to the next Lompoc City Council meeting at 6:30 PM on July 2nd, 2024. And council, don't forget, we're on a float on Saturday.